That's the screen I'm aware of. Excellent. Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's 5:01 PM on June 4th, 2025. This is the special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council tonight, 5:00 Wednesday, June 4th. Already said that call this meeting to order. And I'll will note, I will take for the record reflect that we have all council members present with the exception of Mr. Walk, Councilmember Walking Stick and Councilmember Pederi at this time. And Councilmember Pederi will be joining us in a few minutes. And we're, if this is the special meeting and I will, we're on the special meeting agenda, we have two items, A, public employment, government code section 54957, title city manager performance evaluation. And we also have a B conference with labor negotiators, city negotiators, Matt Mogensen, Fred Marsh, Shea Johnson, Labor, Labor Cassidy and Whitmore. However, we are not going to be, this is an error. The item B is not going to be heard tonight. We, this, this is not an item for consideration tonight. Ergo, I will request that approval of the agenda of item A only and that item B be pulled.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Emilio to that effect. We have a second by Rao. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take to a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes and we will only hear item A tonight on the special agenda. And at this time, I believe we will take public comment on item A then. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's, that's correct. You should ask for public comment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take public comment on public employment, city manager performance evaluation. Anyone, there's no one in chambers tonight. There's no public attendees, only staff. Ergo, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much. We'll be back at 6:00 PM. I know, it looks good.
Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
It's six o'clock and you are here at the regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, June fourth, twenty twenty five. We're here in Council Chambers, three hundred Forest Avenue in Pacific Grove, California. I am now calling this meeting to order. And I will note that all members of the council are present with the exception of Councilmember Walking Stick. And at this time, I will ask Councilmember Garfield to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. We are a state of America. And we consider the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain an approval of the agenda motion. Second, we had a motion by Paduri, second by Emilio. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none passes unanimously. We'll go ahead and move on to item two A. And this is mine, this is a pride month proclamation and I have, I have made this proclamation. And it was available with the agenda. And I now will ask the pride Monterey Peninsula Pride, I believe, to come up and accept this proclamation. And maybe we can get a photograph.
Testing.
Would you like to say anything?
Always.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. The flag raising was amazing on Monday. It was just so excellent. Monterey Peninsula Pride is on June twenty eighth, Saturday. For anyone who wants to come join us, all are welcome. So come on out and join us. It's a great, great day of adventure and fun.
Thank you so much. And it was, it was a great event and we appreciate all the attendance that we received. Thank you so much. I guess we'll moving right along, we'll go to item three. And this is some council and staff announcements. We'll look to our city attorney for any report out on closed session, which I believe there won't be any. But I'll go ahead and recognize Mr. Pedrick.
You are correct, there is no reportable action from the closed session.
All right, great. And do I have any council members that wish to make any announcements at this time? Mayor Proton, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention the MST Monterey Transit. Carl Sudek has been on Sudek, who's been twenty five years with MST. He started off as a assistant general manager and grew into this. He's been in there twenty five years. He's, he grew the rapid jazz rabbits system. You've probably seen some jazz buses around. He's also had the countless fair tournaments. He's also created new transit services. He also created several new stops in Pacific Grove. And just wanted to recognize him. And we're going to be giving him a certificate of appreciation later on Monday when I meet with him.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Sodork's been serving the community for twenty five years and we will be presenting him with a city proclamation as well. Any others council announcements? Seeing none, I'll turn to Mr. Mogensen at this time and ask if there are any staff announcements. None this evening, Ms. Mayor. Thank you very much. And now at this time, moving right along, we'll hit item four. This is general public comment. This is comment that deals with matters subject to the jurisdiction of our city and the council, but not, not appearing on tonight's agenda. So are there any members of the public that would wish to make a public comment in here in person in the chambers? I'll take chambers first. Mr. Gibbs.
Haven't been here in a while. It's good to see everybody still here. A couple of things. There is a bill at the state level. It's passed the assembly, it's bill six oh nine. There is another bill for the senate. I don't know the number of that, but they haven't gotten slammed together yet and they're not approved and they may not get approved. What, if you don't know what six oh nine does, which is already passed the assembly, it would exempt new housing in urban areas from state environmental law known as SEQA. Right? So call at us, call John Laird and tell him if they're not on board with this, they should get on board with this. It's been far too long that these projects have been stopped by SEQA and Coastal Commission and other kind of things. So moving on to a different topic. Some of you may have read this in the New York Times yesterday. It says health risk from cannabis may re, may rise for seniors. And I know we're in the process somewhere of a cannabis pot shop here in Pacific Grove. So a couple of things from this article, and this is based on research at the journal, the American Medical Association. Cannabis use among the older population is rising rapidly since twenty nineteen. The older population by a factor of twenty is increasing their use of cannabis by all sorts of things. What they have found since, really since this first came up in Pacific Grove, there's been a lot of research in that in the older population, if you've already have cardiac risk, some of us have that. It accelerates, the use of cannabis accelerates cannabis risk. And older people using cannabis increases your risk of dementia by one point five times, by one and a half times. If you did not use cannabis. So this, this is a study that they equalize for age and race and all of that. And the last thing I would mention is that in the Journal of American Medical Association, their conclusion was a lot of people still think that tobacco is more dangerous than cannabis. This study concludes with a statement that science does not support the existing assumptions about cannabis. It is more dangerous, they're starting to find out than tobacco. So I know that the ordinance has been passed. I know that somewhere all this is going to go on. I know there's a consulting firm working on this. I know people in the council voted for this, I'm just adding information. So when this pot shop opens up, we know what we're getting into. And some cities, I would just use my last seventeen seconds. In some states, there are law firms, everything is being sued now. Law firms that are suing the local authorities for the effects of cannabis on their population. Just something to think about. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. We'll go ahead and if there's no one, is there anyone else? Okay, come on up. Are there any hands online?
Yes, Mayor, we have two hands raised.
Okay, we'll take this one in chambers and move to those two.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you so much for the proclamation and for the flag raising on Monday. I'm a new resident of Pacific Grove and it means so much to have such a welcoming community. And it's amazing to see all the flags everywhere. And thank you to everyone who has raised a flag. Oh, and I bought cookies, so thank you all.
All right, great, we'll dig into those. We appreciate the shout out from you. Thank you so much. Let's go to the online callers, please.
Ms. Chaney.
Thank you. I wanted to speak about a item on the consent agenda that I will, will not be pulling. But it's number nine C about the emergency removal and replacement of a manhole at Beach Street in Del Monte. And I imagine that Public Works will not be having any kind of archaeological or tribal monitoring for that. But it will probably be a SEQA exemption or whatever. But I wanted to point out that even though the area would have already been disturbed for the original manhole cover and the replacement of, of the manhole itself and not just the cover. Even though it's already been disturbed, that does not mean that there would not be a discovery of indigenous remains or, or artifacts. In fact, that happened in Monterey on a street right outside the Presidio when they replaced a manhole there. And the remains of an indigenous adult toddler and infant were discovered there. And they were eventually repatriated to the, to the tribe and, and buried in a plot provided by the city of Monterey in their cemetery. So if I would just like to request that Public Works make all the workers on this project aware of the archaeological sensitivity in Pacific Grove, particularly in that area and, and make them aware of the responsibilities to protect, to protect those resources and, and report them immediately. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello, you can hear me? Yes. Okay, hi, well, I'm calling about the situation which the mayor gave a little award for a little while earlier about the pride month. I'm a little confused, is it general pride month? I thought it was gay pride month, the L and the G. The lesbian and gay communities. That's how I thought it started and we used to fly that beautiful rainbow flag in recognition that it was okay, you were loved as much as anyone else if you were gay or lesbian. And then somehow it seems that it became LGBT. And some people added Q and then some people added plus. Now, the city is flying a plat, flag that's ambiguous. What's the Q and what's the plus? You know, I mean, the L, the G, the B, no problem. I think that's great. These people deserve recognition, love, support and pride. But it's when you have something ambiguous and the city's promoting Q and plus. What, what's the Q and the plus? It doesn't make any sense to me. I'm surprised people in the gay community haven't brought this up. It seems like their holiday, their month has been usurped. And the city's going along with it, assuming that the entire population, or at least the majority condones LGBT Q plus. Okay, the plus, I think is the biggest ambiguous part. So where, where are we going with this? Well, take it for yourself. At the big rally that you had raising the flag, I counted forty seven people, not counting the school superintendent and other dignitaries who were there to speak. And I was a little surprised that the school superintendent would come to raise a flag that's so ambiguous that we really haven't heard, maybe you can fill us in about the Q and the plus. I'm all in favor of the L, the G, the B. The T is a little questionable, but the Q and the plus? Okay, that's all I want to share with you. I think that needs to be addressed. If the city's going to be supporting and sponsoring these types of thoughts, activities and ideas, I think we need clarification from the council as well as from the school board. So that, which you have nothing to do with, but thank you very much for listening. And God bless everybody. Thank you, carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Chair. Let me step back to the nine C issue, please. You know, I am wondering and find it interesting, how many emergency projects are brought to you, the council, for last minute approval? And I do mean last minute. Oh, it's an emergency, let's, don't, let's spend, I'm just wondering how many that happens with? And how was this failure of a manhole cover not detected sooner? That planning and into budgets can happen. So I'm just wondering about emergency expenditures and kind of approval last minute. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the comment. Anyone else?
More for the hands, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to go, go ahead and close general public comment and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda deals with routine and non controversial matters and may include actual resolutions, ordinances or other public hearings. At this time, I will. I see a hand raised. So I think it's for the consent agenda. So and at this time, I'll ask members of the council, is anyone wishing to pull an item?
I'd like to pull item number six A, please.
Six A, okay, that's green waste. Okay, so for those watching at home that put their hands up, six A has been pulled. So if you are calling to pull that, it's been done already. Any other council members wishing to pull anything else? Anyone here in chambers or online wishing to pull any of the items tonight?
I have two online, Mayor. Jane, Jane Mills?
Hello, I'd like to pull item eight A.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go see?
Thank you, nine B.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent. We're going to hear the green waste item right after consent. And we're going to hear items eight A and nine B at the end of the agenda because we have a lot to get through tonight. We need to complete those.
I'll make a move to what you just said, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, we have motion by Emilio, approve consent. Six A will be heard right after consent. Eight A and nine B will be heard at the end of the agenda. And I have a second, Paduri. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call, or I'll take a voice vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously, we'll move to item six A, the green waste item now. And I'll turn to my colleague, Councilmember Paduri on this item.
I think I'd like to, are there any public comments on this item before?
Okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and that's a good idea. We'll go ahead and ask for any members of the public wishing to speak about the green waste. I know Ms. Dornier would like to speak about it. We got an email from her. Ms. Dornier can go first.
King Lawrence and Dana.
Thank you. I just needed that unmute button, Sandra. Yes, of course, I'm going to come back every year until you give seniors and low income homeowners a break because we just do not generate the garbage. We get unreasonable rate raises for us. We can't have a smaller, lowest bin is thirty two gallons. And we need us, you know, previous one, Waste Management had a twenty gallon one, which I utilize. Okay, here I am. And you know, it's like, it's almost getting to absolute discrimination and abuse of seniors, low income senior homeowners in Pacific Grove. And you know, I've been here for over fifty years permanently, you know? But known, been here for all my seventy five years. And this is just getting every other, they're too mandatory, too mandatory bills homeowners must pay. And that is sewer and garbage. And hello, those are the sewer now has used it on one water. Mayor, you know that it took a while, but now they have a low income slight break. Thank you very much. This is the only holdout and it's needed.
And give the comment, we appreciate it. Anyone else online?
I know for the hands, Mayor.
Okay, I'll come, go ahead and bring it back to Councilmember Paduri.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. I totally understand the agreement, how it has been structured, fees and all. And I'm just going to write on the same caller's notes, which is this particular item does say that the city and green waste may mutually agree upon alternative approaches to structuring rates without amendment to the agreement. And on that note, I wanted to find out from you, George, is it feasible for us to understand how, how much of our population that are senior citizens are kind of like utilizing this? And if we can this? And if we can curtail the rate increase or keep it at the same level for only a certain set of the population, is that something that we can work with green waste to do it or not?
Councilmember Bupadury through there. So just a little background, this agreement was put into place in 2014. And in the past, this same topic has come up and the city has inquired with Green Waste if they'd be interested in renegotiating that. But I think the whole agreement was set up at this rate structure. So yes, every resident, every business is required to have trash service and part of that requirement is a minimum service level. And the agreed upon bin size was set in 2014. And if we were to change that, it would affect the prices of, you know, all customers across the board. So past inquiries, I know that as recently as last year, we requested if Green Waste would consider that and they declined. So I think the negotiation would have to involve, you know, some sort of concession from the city to make up for that. And as far as demographics go, I think all of our senior citizens in some way or another are customers of Green Waste because we require all, you know, how properties to be customers. So everybody is required with very few exceptions and that either falls on the homeowner, the landlord or might pass through to the renter. But all of our seniors, all of our low-income residents are ultimately in one or another customers of Green Waste.
Okay, and, and so without, I would say, getting into the details of the agreement, the agreement does not have any concessions for any kind of sets of population with the different demographic, correct?
I do not believe so.
Okay, and, and this particular comment that has come in the report, which says, which, which I cited earlier, section eight point two point D, city and GWR may agree upon alternative approaches without getting into the agreement itself. Is that something that we can review with GWR to see if there's any mutually agreeable kind of conclusions?
We can always ask. And, yep. And if we can mutually agree on something, that's a possibility.
Yeah, I would like us to explore that option at least, just to make sure we're in line with the agreement and whatever is being done here. And, and as part of that, I won't understand really how much of the demographic will be affected because these rates and these rate increases, from what I've seen, are going to creep up over the course of the years and over the course of the contract. And just so that everybody's aware of this, this, the, the way that I see it is if, if we enter into an agreement with another contractor, the rates that are there right now are really super high. So the chances are, if you get into any agreement with anybody else, it's, it's going to be really high. So I, I think it makes sense to just work with the status quo as it is, but see if there are any alternatives that we can do within the status quo to appease the, the demographic that we're looking at. But thank you.
Thank you. So I, I will just recognize, I'll make one comment. I think, I, I think there might be another one, but I agree that we can look at this contract and see what we can get from them. And they may not bend on it because obviously there's higher prices out there already. So I'm going to also ask that we move to approve the recommended action tonight to so that we can move forward with our service. But I think the other thing is, is that this is a fifteen-year agreement. And so we're kind of getting nearer to the point of renegotiation. So I think the only thing we can do now is to approve what we have to maintain our costs at, at the level we're at, but, and possibly explore is things with green waste now under contract with not a lot of leverage, but we also are renegotiating. We used to have Waste Management before that. So we then have competing firms at that point. So maybe that might be the real, the leverage that's needed to make any real changes. But at this time, I would entertain the motion to approve, and I understand Councilmember Rao would like to speak.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just going to make more approval of the motion as it is with direction to staff stating that explore the option of the decided statement to see if there's any alternative approaches.
Yeah, and I would add that, let's see if we can add that alternative approach to a secondary or a third size can that would be more appropriate. And I know that from our perspective, because of the push to, for compostables, that we have, we rarely fill our can. It's usually half-full. And I think a lot of other people are in that same situation that we're using the recycling more, we're using the composting more, but we're in a situation now where, you know, as our habits start to change, that needs to be taken into consideration in the next contract. So I'm with Councilmember Bupadury. Let's see if there's something that we can do. And to the caller, I mean, unfortunately, they have to have service, right? There's nothing you can do about it. You can't ask your neighbor to double up on the trash, right?
Correct, Councilmember Rao. The city ordinance requires all residences have a minimal service level.
Do I have a second for the motion that was made?
I'll second it.
Emilio, second. Any further discussion? Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you for asking that question because my question was the same. So if we have a requirement that people have to have the service, I was, my question was going to be, is that through the Waste Management Company? Now, knowing now that it's through a city ordinance, is that something we need to revisit to allow sharing? Because if we have people who are a single person to a house, maybe they don't each need a full service. And maybe this is something that's not pursued, but I want to at least raise the question. So we're at least looking creatively at potential alternatives for our citizens who may not need that service, but maybe they could be served by combining two households together.
Councilmember McDonald, I think there is good reason to require all residences to have a service. We have a lot of vacant houses or houses that are only occupied some of the time. And a lot of those people would rather not pay for the service. And when you pay for a service, you're not just paying for your garbage to disappear. You're, you know, a lot of the, the money is going for the transportation. So it's mostly a delivery fee. Really, they're delivering your garbage regardless of how much it is to the dump. And if you cut the size of the bin in half, it's definitely not going to cut, cut the cost in half. And the city also benefits from this as part of the franchise agreement. So for example, the city gets all of our waste removal performed for free as part of this franchise agreement. And I think by requiring all residences to have a minimal service, it's subsidizing the city and it's, you know, dividing that expense amongst all residents. So if we start saying certain people don't need to have a service, then, then the cost for everybody will inevitably go up.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you for that answer. I would just like to find a, see if there's any way we can find a solution, whether that be for, if the city finances may be discount for, for seniors who have income needs or something like that. I don't know if that's an option, but I just want us to be thinking about any possibilities we may be able to have for people who are impacted by this.
Thank you. I think, I think the motion actually gives enough leeway for that. And so we had a motion and a second. I'd like to take a vote on this, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bupadury? Mayor Pro Tim, Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmembers Garfield?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one. Councilmember Walking Stick absent.
Okay, great. Great discussion. Thank you very much. And I know that you guys will carry that forward. And we'll go on to item eleven A. This is the amending the salary schedule. And Ms. Levian is here to present.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, staff and members of the public. In 2023 and 2024, through negotiation process, city council approved a three percent cost of living adjustment for employee groups, which included GEA, MEA, POA, non-represented management and confidential's and the department head groups. Salary increases for these groups spanned over three fiscal years. This is the third increase in the series for GEA, MEA, non-represented management and confidential and department head groups. And it is the second increase in the series for POA. In order to make the administrative change and revise the salary schedule, council must approve amendment to the salary schedule by ordinance. So tonight, staff is requesting approval of a salary schedule amendment by ordinance to incorporate the salary increases that were approved in 2023 and 2024 for the mentioned employee groups. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Take it out to the public. Anyone in chambers wishing to comment on the salary schedule? Anyone online wishing to comment on the salary schedule item eleven A?
No hands raised online, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Close public comment on the item. I'll just note that we've already approved this. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the recommended actions. I know that we have to read the title for a rest.
So you want me to start with the reading the title of the ordinance?
Absolutely. That'd be great.
All right. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pacific Grove, amending the classification schedule. And the motion can be the recommended actions two through four.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make that motion two through four.
And Councilmember Emilio, motion to approve recommendations two through four?
Second.
Second by Rao. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Tim Emilio? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
My mic was not on, Mayor Pro Tim, but he was an aye. Councilmembers Garfield?
Aye.
Bupadury? Donald?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, thank you.
Motion carries six zero one. Councilmember Walking Six absent.
All right, thank you very much. And we got to stay competitive. This is just us trying to stay competitive in the community with our salaries. Here we go. Now we are rolling on to item eleven B. This is the, the big budget item for the night. And I believe Mr. Marsh is going to take us into the budget and the passage thereof.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and fellow council members. So this is a continuation of the May meeting where we basically went into great detail on the general fund. So tonight, basically, we're going to cover all of the funds for the city, basically, including the general fund, just a brief recap on the general fund. So yeah, like I said before, we're going to cover all the major funds. Great. Thanks, Sandra. So all of the major funds, we'll just briefly kind of go over the positions that are being funded in the budget for next year. And then we'll briefly cover the capital outlay and improvements included in the budget. Obviously, Joyce went through that in great detail, but just to kind of remind, you know, the council kind of what is basically included in the two-year budget. So overall, for the two-year budget, basically, the budget for the first year covering all funds is about forty-eight million dollars. That's rising to about fifty-five million dollars in the second year. The biggest reason for that increase is Public Works is doing a, a great investment in our sewer systems. We're planning about seven million dollars of improvements to the sewer system to basically replace as part of the master plan, different parts of the system. So the biggest part for us is the, the general fund, basically. So our general fund is about two-thirds of our budget. The other funds that are in the city's budget include enterprise funds. Those are designed to be self-sustaining, internal service funds. Those are mostly for insurance where we build up reserves over time to cover claims. We have some special revenue or basically restricted funds that are for a variety of different activities. And then we also have some permanent funds. Those are basically endowment funds that are used for like our cemetery, library, and we also have a Yount Trust Fund for recreational activities. So part of this, we've, as part of our policy for the city, we do a five-year forecast. So you've seen these numbers. They've been slightly revised for the first two years, basically. They do, we still are forecasting deficits for the first two years, but we're anticipating meeting the reserve, the revised reserve requirements that are in the revised policy. One of the things we did, that I did basically in looking at the five-year forecast, was just looking at what it would look like in the remaining three years, kind of assuming no changes to our revenues and expenses. So unfortunately, with that in mind, basically, the deficits are projected to continue into the future and that our reserve levels would continue to drop. Think it's really important to know, though, that, you know, we're not anticipating, obviously, letting it drop to, you know, such a low level. I mean, one of the things that in our focus areas is to really delve into more of the financials, you know, of the city and seeing if there's ways we can potentially reduce expenses, enhance revenues, and just kind of look at other options as well, too. One of the key things on this as well, too, it does not include any additional revenues that we're anticipating from either the new hotels coming into the city into the future. These are, and this is just a repeat from last time of what's driving the deficits for the first two years. So I really won't go into it, but a lot of it is obviously stagnant revenues. We're facing, you know, very similar issues to our surrounding cities, some increase in pension costs. It does incorporate the MOUs, too, that are approved for this year as well. So I do want to go into the assumptions a little bit for the next, for the, basically the outer three years, just so council kind of understands what was in that forecast. So the one area we continue to see growth in is property taxes. I mean, we pretty have sta-, we've had steady growth here in, in Pacific Grove for a long time. So I think most people know, we are subject, like everybody else, to the Prop-13 limits. So, and we've had consistent growth in that area of two percent each year. We also continue to get some new activity from, you know, permits and changeover and ownership. So that's why we anticipate, you know, pretty comfortable that we can hit a four percent increase over the next few years. The other taxes, however, probably won't grow at that rate. In particular, sales tax has been somewhat stagnant over the last couple of years, and continuing that trend into the future as people continue to focus more on services and buying less of products, in essence. We have factored in the Calpurs actuarials that go out for several years into the forecast. We did assume that, and obviously, this is subject to change based upon whatever council agrees upon with the MOUs, we did assume a similar level of cost of living adjustments for employees throughout the five years. That's currently going to go into place for next year. And it does incorporate the retirement of the pension obligation bonds in fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine. It's going to save us about one point six million a year. With that, does not assume any recession during any of the five-year period. And it doesn't assume any that we're going to be able to make any contributions to pension or capital reserves. And I do want to focus again, this is basically just a trend looking, you know, at the numbers. The, the actual results obviously are going to vary. So this is just a kind of reminder for council of basically the main highlights of what we're looking to change out in the reserve policies. So with the revenue and expense budgets, basically to look at a two percent contingency, up to a two percent contingency for both, the general fund changing the reserve levels from thirty-five percent to twenty-five percent of operations, but basically redistributing, 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 wow, that's a word, part of those reserves into a capital reserve and a pension reserve as requested by council, as by requested by mayor and another person. What we've done now in the policy is adjusted the target to be one million for both. And then the year-end surplus, again, just to remind council, the, what we're structuring it to be is any year there's a surplus, one-third would go to a capital reserve, one-third would go to a pension, pension reserve, one-third would go to a capital reserve, and one-third would continue to build up the operating reserve for the city. So with these targets in place, we are expected to meet the twenty-five percent operating reserve over the next couple of years. We're really close on the capital reserve at the end of the two years. And the pension, we're making probably about fifty percent progress towards that target as well, too. So the enterprise fund, so as council knows, we have four major enterprise funds, our cemetery, our golf, our local water project, and then the sewer as well, too. The sewer fund is expected to drop in reserves quite a bit, as I mentioned before, because of the substantial capital projects that we're looking to do in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Public Works is going to be working on an update to, and having a sewer rate fee study. So, and the last one done was for a ten-year period. So we'll be looking probably to do a similar to five to ten-year period to have it covered for the next round. And obviously, we want to continue to invest in our sewer systems, you know, critical for our city and for our residents, you know, that we have a well-functioning sewer system within the city. So the reserves still go down, but they can fund at least, at least one year's worth of IP. Ideally, we want to get it, especially when you do the study. So in the future, whatever reserves we have in place, that we can always fund at least two years of CIP. The idea behind that is to avoid bonds whenever we can, because obviously it's usually more costly to have to inter-, issue bonds with issuance costs and interest rates than to just pay as you go, in essence. Golf, there's a little bit of a deficit over the next couple of years with that, but still definitely meets its reserve policy for both of the years. This is something we may be looking in future, potentially at the con- our current contract to see if we can adjust some potential items, you know, to help build up the reserves in the Gulf Fund. On the local water project, as you know, we, we did increase the rate on that slightly, you know, for next year as well, too. And we're going to continue to look at that to see if ways that we can help build up reserves in that fund as well, too. The cemetery is a little bit of a concern. As you can see, we are projecting deficits for each of the next couple of years. So we're going to have to continue to evaluate the operations of that and seeing there's ways we can potentially restructure both revenues and expenses. But it's, it is something we need to kind of keep a focus on and at least so. But the good news is, at least, like I said, for the Gulf Fund, we're basically, we are definitely meeting a reserve requirement and we're making good progress on the sewer one as well, too, with the new, with the new target. For the internal service funds, basically, these funds are meeting the revised new target recommended by council of seventy-five percent of our liabilities for both of them. And as you can see, they pretty have, they have pretty good reserves. So they're both in pretty good Um, and as you can see, they pretty have, they have pretty good reserves, so they're both in pretty good shape. Uh, and this, when the general CIP fund, one of the council members was asking why there is such a large balance. And again, it's just a reminder, uh, we're taking about a million dollars from the general fund this year to basically add to the capital projects fund to kind of build up that reserve. Um, the deficit you're seeing in there, what we're going to be doing is using part of those reserves to help fund of the replacement of our accounting system. So those, again, are one-time expenses. Um, so this is, I did this a little bit new for this year. Um, we have a ton of individual special revenue funds. So one of the things I wanted to do, I kind of worked with my staff on, is to look to combine them more into categories such as like police, streets, library, instead of listing each individual fund, you'll see in the attached budget document, they're kind of grouped by these types. I think it just makes it a little bit easier instead of having, you know, fifty different funds, you're getting down to about, you know, ten special revenue funds, but you still get the purpose of what they're supposed to be used for. Um, and it helps the departments as well, too, to kind of know what they have available. So just to kind of go over these really quickly, some of these are being used to fund capital projects such as our fire equipment fund. Um, the library fund a little bit to some extent. Um, and this, um, the streets definitely are are being used as that's really the big thing, and you'll see in a minute in the capital improvement program, the big emphasis is the streets and sewer funds and funding our capital improvements, you know, for the next couple of years. Um, and a couple of these are available for, you know, just various projects such as for the, at the museum. Um, police, they have some special revenues that help fund the SRO and the nine-one-one operations and our cable peg funds as well, too, to help broadcast these meetings as well. Um, so and then just a reminder, we do have three basically trust or endowment funds, uh, one for the library, one for the cemetery, and one for the gout. Uh, we basically don't draw upon these unless there's a specific requested project, you know, that falls under these categories. Typically, we like to let these build because they obviously are for the long-term operation, you know, in particular for the library and the cemetery. And just overall city positions, because in fact, we were, you know, projecting deficits for each of the next two years. Uh, staff, we really worked hard together to make sure that we were not basically keeping, you know, the employment count status quo for each of the next couple of years. So you can see for us, the biggest um, biggest areas of the employees are for police and public works. That's not surprising, you know, given the the number of activities that we're supporting here. Uh, the other categories really covers a wide variety, such as, you know, recreation, uh, library, community development, city manager's office, and um, council members, too. Technically, you guys are considered employees and the admin services as well. Um, and then just a reminder, um, this Joyce covered obviously in great detail, you know, during her presentation. But we are funding, in spite of our, you know, limited budget, we are funding a number of kind of needed items here at the city. We're continuing to invest in, you know, IT and cybersecurity, which, you know, we think is really important and safety as well, too. We're looking at some access upgrades um, for both police and city hall. Um, and we're looking to do kind of with limited funds, you know, investment in our fire department with equipping the new fire engine, um, radios for our police department and, you know, taking advantage of what where we can for solar lights to to reduce energy costs for some of our light fixtures as well. And or like I mentioned before with the IP, the really main emphasis on CIP is in streets and public works. That's really where we're doing the bulk of our money. What we're doing with this, too, and Joyce mentioned this during her presentation, but that's the bulk of our kind of our transfers coming out of the general fund. Uh, we basically make at least a minimum transfer every year of five hundred thousand dollars so that we continue to meet what's called the maintenance of effort. So we can continue to receive those measure acts and those gas tax because they're critical for us to help maintain our street infrastructure here at the city. And just a reminder to you guys, we see this as part of your core lease CIP reports to council, but these are a number of projects that are currently in progress right now. Um, they may carry over to next year, so this is something we may just adjust the budget, you know, as we roll over the encumbrance to next year. But um, Public Works is making really good project uh, progress on these projects. And there's actually a number, if you looked at the last third quarter report, they're actually complete. So they're making very good progress on their projects. Um, so in summary, we recommend that council, um, and just to remind the public as well, too, we, because this is an ordinance, um, there's basically two readings um, for this budget. So this is the first reading this time. Um, and then we'll be bringing this back on the eighteenth with the final version of the budget, um, in a second reading of the ordinance. Um, so with that, I recommend that um, council receive the report, provide staff with feedback regarding the proposed budget and changes to the fiscal financial policies. A request that this uh, city attorney to read the title of the ordinance, um, and then to have a motion to waive further reading of the ordinance and to introduce and hold the first reading of an ordinance to adopt the fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven operating and capital improvement budget. And that uh, directs to, sorry, the direct staff, that publication of the ordinance will be satisfied by publication of a summary approved by the city attorney. And be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We're going to take it out to the public. Um, thank you for the excellent report and truly is really great work that you guys have done on the budget this year and making it a two-year process. Um, so we'll go to the, anyone in chambers wishing to comment on the budget? Seeing them, anyone online wishing to comment on item eleven B?
There are no hands raised. Online mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and bring you back to the council for comments, questions, um, and discussion and approval eventually, and I'll go ahead and recognize my colleague, uh, Councilmember Ralph.
Okay. Um, and just to be clear, Mr. Marsh, so there are five openings in the police department right now, right? So this budget is a fully allocated budget, assuming that all those positions are filled. As we go along, and I'm doing this basically for the public to listen, but as we go along, I don't want to say that there's savings there, but it's not going to be the impact that we think it is and because it is fully allocated, but we're not spending that money on those salaries today. So uh, the longer it takes to fill these positions, we're saving money, so to speak.
We, and that's a very good point. We absolutely are. What we've kind of done is a little bit of an indirect approach. I talked earlier, and I'll go back to this. Um, about, you know, establishing the contingencies, basically, this is kind of the way we've addressed that. And I mean, some cities would actually put a line item like non-departmental, that's a contingency. Basically, because we're fully, we're doing, like you said, we're budgeting at one hundred percent staffing. Obviously, that's not going to occur for us. So we're kind of using that savings to kind of have the contingency in there. So, but you're absolutely right. Uh, the longer we don't fill a position. Now, I I do caution a little bit, some of the departments, because they have such a critical need for a position, there's ways that that those costs are not necessarily fully, savings are real, fully realized. Number one, they might have additional overtime.
Right.
Because they need, number two, they might put somebody temporarily out of class to help, you know, address the thing. And number three, they might contract with another firm to temporarily fill that position. So we don't necessarily have a hundred percent savings, but usually we'll have some. That's right.
Okay. And then as I looked at that one hundred and three point five as our staff and we maintain, is that a freeze? Or, I mean, if somebody resigns, are we going to fill? Are we going to uh, make a decision based on where we think that we can, you know, allocate from or? Mr. Mogerson?
Yeah, Councilmember Ralph, she's, because she was looking at me, I'm guessing the question's for me. Um, yeah, so that is our current allocation at the one oh three, like um, like the, like Fred had mentioned. Going forward, you know, our plan is not to necessarily just allow reduced positions, but we do plan to kind of make a concerted decision on positions as we go forward, just to make sure that we're hiring what we really need versus just filling something right away. So we want to take a little bit more of a calculated approach to that. And if there are positions that we can leave open a little bit longer because they don't impact services for one reason or another, you know, we might look to do that to close some of the gap over this year and to make the the budget at the end of the year be more balanced.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Oh, thank you. Um, Councilmember Pro Tim Emilio.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I had a several, I was one that asked several questions and it looks like Mr. Mogerson, um. So I'm looking through them. I looked at them before I came here. Now I'm looking through my phone on this, but um, you answered all the questions. Appreciate it. Uh, the the one question um, I had on one of them was, uh, we spend um, uh, the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget says three point eight nine nine for the fire department, Monterey Fire. And I know the many years ago, I don't know how many years ago, several years ago, um, you weren't sure of it. I was wondering about um, what the cost would be approximately to have our own Pacific Grove Fire Department. Uh, and I know you hadn't, I I can't get an answer now, but if you could, Mr. Marsh, maybe check on that.
Yeah, we'd have to kind of do, it's not like we couldn't do some work on that, but um, there's just a lot involved with that in essence. Uh, we'd almost have to have a, to be honest, we almost have to have a study done because um, Monterey really handles a lot of different stuff for us. I mean, that they don't not only employ, obviously, the direct firefighters, there's a lot of administration they do. You know, there's, you know, there's pass down of indirect costs, you know, that they have from the city itself. Um, so I mean, obviously, I could look at potentially other cities that staff in-house to give you a ballpark range. That might be the best way to do it.
You could.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Marsh, you could just um, at your convenience, just check to see what the other cities comparison in the, I'm supportive of the budget also. Yeah, I just uh, just had a question on, I know we did have a uh, Pacific Grove uh, Fire Department years ago, and I'm just wondering what what other cities are doing. Maybe you could do a ballpark figure.
Absolutely have to. So what we'll do is I'll compile a little survey that shows here's the kind of nearby cities, here's their population, and then here's their budget, you know.
Okay, that would be fun. At your convenience. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Councilmember Donald, go to Garfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and thank you for the the clarification. I appreciate the conservative estimates that you give us so that that helps us to be aware of where we need to understand the trends that we're going. Um, and also understanding that we will anticipate with the Kimpton coming on the end of this year, that that obviously will improve um, revenue projections. So obviously, we don't know how much and how soon. Um, the one thing, so um, everything looked good, and thank you to the city manager for answering other clarification questions because I think that always helps them to know, you know, what council's thinking about ways that we can cut. I appreciate anything that we're doing where we may have some um, upfront costs to reduce costs in the future. So things like the IT improvements, I think we're definitely going in the right direction with those, and thank you for for listening to those ideas, though I'm sure you have them as well. And um, the one thing that um, sort of I didn't get a chance to clarify yet, I I did actually um, appreciate that if you looked at the outstanding debt chart, there is a steady decline from, I think it was twenty seventeen, um, or actually since twenty fourteen. So although we still have the pension obligation, we're very steadily making progress on that. And like you said, that bond will be taken care of, and I think you said twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Um, the one thing that I just wanted to ask about is in recreation, we do have um, a requirement to get thirty percent cost recovery, and I noticed it as we're going into the future years, we're down, getting down to twenty-one percent. So just bringing that up, I'm sure you've already looked to it, but kind of if it's something council needs to address, how do we look at going forward and making, you know, redesigning or whatever we need to do to make sure we stay within those projections?
I think the great thing is council's kind of already addressed, kind of given us some feedback as far as the areas of focus. That was actually one of the things in the areas of focus for basically the Recreation Division to kind of take a look at its programs and kind of see where we're getting the most bang for its buck. And then, you know, come back to council with some recommendations on some potential changes. So now the key thing on that, I would just say, is recreation, they obviously need plenty of advanced time for their programs because they start advertising way early, you know, for their summer program. So, you know, any changes that we want for twenty-six, twenty-seven, you know, we we probably need, I mean, and, you know, Dan and Katie could give you a lot more information on that, but, you know, we probably need to know, I'd say by, I'm guessing by like maybe January or whatever, you know. So and I know that they're working at already starting to take a look at those, so.
Yeah, and that would be great because I think the idea is to offer as many services as we can because we want to be serving the public, and we've definitely ramped that up. But if we find some areas where maybe they're not as popular, maybe adapting to the things that will get more use. So we're getting more value for the dollars spent. I think that'd be great. So thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add a little bit more to that on the recreation side. So over the last couple of years, it was a goal of the council to increase our programs to have more services. I think the result of that is probably about three hundred thousand more we're spending now to expand those. So we think that after this summer will be a good time to kind of review and see, you know, the bank, the the how the programs performed over the summer and see if those are still, if we're going in the right direction, if we need to readjust or maybe combine some things to make it more cost-effective, so.
Perfect. Yeah, that's exactly what I would would want. Councilman Garfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just as a side note, is I think all of our programs, it's it's really important to keep evaluating the, whether the goal that was intended has actually been met. So I appreciate people taking a hard look at it over the summer to see if the programs have had enough time to really um, meet their potential. And if so, then are they the right ones? So um, I think that's really good. Um, I also appreciated um, a huge amount of information in here, really, really appreciated that. And it looks to me like we are seeing um, an intent and the way the budget was put together to really pay attention to things that have been long neglected. Um, focusing on infrastructure, focusing on roads and focusing on the sewer system. And all of this is, is, why do we do that? Well, it improves the livability of the city for people who live here. It makes our city safer as as the stewards of the bay. So if we have no leaks in our sewer system, we're taking better care of the bay. So while it's not very sexy and it's not very showy, um, it's, it serves a really important goal that all of us have to take good care of the city and its surroundings. Um, I I I'm glad, I'm glad we're going to be taking good care of our environment. Um, and I think that some of the things we're doing will have ripple effect to make the city more attractive, which in effect proves uh, improves our visitation, um, visitor experience and improves the um, viability of our downtown, our businesses, which serve our visitor population and the citizens. So there's a ripple effect from taking good care of the city, and I'm I'm glad to see this. I appreciate all the information and clearly there's more more room for study in here, especially the work that you did on uh, statistical comparisons of selected agencies for our pension obligation. It really tells us that we're we're doing a lot with not very much, and I I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Pedri?
Thank you. Um, great presentation as always. Um, I like the really the, all the information that you're putting together. Uh, it's coming really nicely and o- hoping to continue the same way in the future. Um, my questions are, first of all, I also noted that there were so many assumptions. It's like a disclaimer list, like uh, how I go through things and then discard it and just like focus on the main picture. But uh, one of, one of the things that I wanted to ask was the cemetery operations. Obviously, you mentioned that there we need to think about it in the later years. So what is actually driving that exactly?
Um, you know, and this is something I can kind of give more information on, probably I'll, I can follow up with Simi a little bit later on this. Uh, my understanding is obviously, you know, the cemetery we've had for a long time, and the number of plots that we have continued to kind of reduce over time. Our population also has continued to reduce over time as well, too. So and, you know, there's just ongoing regular maintenance that we need to do, you know, at the cemetery. The other thing as well, too, is our water costs, you know, although it's it's with the local water project, they do continue to rise as well, too. So we've have to kind of balance out those things. All of those things together are basically affecting the cemetery, you know, as a whole. So this is one of the reasons we I have on our list to look at in the future to see kind of what areas, you know, partic- there's only so much we can do in revenues. Obviously, is, you know, we had a a consultant look at it and kind of come up with the rates, so I'm not sure how much more we can really adjust the rates. Um, this may be something, you know, just as a long-term issue. Cemeteries are difficult to fund, you know, long-term, you know, especially for a city like us. We have an older city. You know, you've, you know, the cemetery has kind of been built out mostly. It doesn't mean we couldn't potentially add like a mausoleum or whatever, but those are very expensive to add. So I know it's a long-winded answer, but it's something we're going to kind of take a look at to see, maybe if we can at least trim at the edges a little bit to kind of bring down that deficit somewhat, so.
Okay. Uh, that's actually helpful, and and it's not for me to say we need to grow revenue from cemetery. Uh, this is just like me asking, just fundamentally, how how is it working out?
Yeah.
Um, so the uh, the other thing um, I noticed was uh, do we have a new fire truck for my edification? Yes or no?
My understanding, we have the fire truck. Uh, I think, well, I'm not sure if we have it. I think we're close. It takes two years. Do you know more about this, Matt? Yeah.
Yeah, the last estimate that we got was um, February of uh, next year.
Okay, so it's still in the works. It's it's almost.
They've built one screw at a time, like an as- assembly line.
Okay, wow. Yeah.
Okay. And and so I I noticed that you had uh, equipment of a fire engine. Is this the same thing?
It's.
And and it's continuing for two years. So how much equipment do we need?
They wanted, I think, brought out because basically it's kind of like Matt was saying, we won't be getting it at least until February. So I think they're timing it so they do part of it like probably towards the end of the, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six, and then the rest of it in twenty-six, twenty-seven. I think it's just a spreading. They also kind of wanted to, I I mean, this is my understanding from fire, smooth smoothed out their costs a little bit, so that's why they kind of broke it out over the two years.
Okay. Looking forward to it whenever it gets here. Um, and the last question for me was, obviously, there's some concerted effort to put a reserve and there's some pulling off. obviously, there's some concerted effort to put a reserve and there's some pulling off money from the general funds. Uh, this time like a million dollars. Is that budgeted in for the future years, like a million pullout every year?
No, unfortunately, it's not. I mean, basically, we're able to do, we're able to kind of, because we reduced our operating reserve from the 35% to 25%, we basically used that to fund those reserves. That's one of the things I kind of mentioned in the five-year forecast. Unfortunately, we do not have anything going into, um, you know, additional monies going into either of those reserves. But the plan would be, um, should we have surplus? I mean, we talked about this earlier, for example, with vacancies, you know, if we have an unexpected large number of vacancies in a year and it results in a surplus for us, that's the great thing about the revised policy is that basically kind of per council direction, we can have one-third of that go to bill, you know, have additional buildup for capital, one-third also for pension as well too. And, you know, we may also, you know, if council directs us to in the future, we may potentially want to look at a revenue measure to maybe fund some capital improvements as well too, because that would really, you know, help to address this, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate the report. Um, I think the, uh, obviously, we've been working on this for a few meetings. And, uh, where we are is efforts to separate funds, create, change our policies, get away from having giant balances in a bank that aren't making very much money and get into working on pension reform and capital improvements, which is what people want in the community. And we're, we're trying our best to live up to that. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, are we reading the title? Okay. Let me go ahead and ask if that be done.
Okay, I understood that to be a request for reading the title. Um, it's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacific Grove, adopting the operating and capital projects budget for fiscal year 2025, 26. And for the balance of the motion, um, you can, uh, say you're moving recommended actions two through four.
I, I will move the recommended actions two through four of the balance. A second. All right, we have a motion by me and a second by Mayor Protem Emilio. Any further discussion of this? Seeing none, go ahead and take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, honestly, for the staff work. That was incredible work, changing to a two-year budget, um, and kind of making some fundamental changes that are going to really help us move forward.
And before I go, I just really want to again, thank city manager, thank all the department heads and thank, um, finance staff, you know, did a great job in putting this together. It's a lot of work. It's a team effort to put this together. So I just want to thank everybody, so.
Thank you to the finance team. Excellent work. Okay, we're going to move right along. We're on item 11C. This is the, uh, special ordinance of the City Council to repeal Chapter 3.40 on the Economic Development Commission. And, um, at this time, I will recognize the city manager to discuss this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, December 18th of last year, 2024, the council had a discussion regarding the efficiency and the effectiveness of the Economic Development Commission at the time. And also discussed whether or not a staffing alternative would create a, uh, larger impact to the economic development efforts in the city. So following that discussion, the council approved, uh, two motions. Uh, the first one, uh, directed the city manager to separate the Economic Development Commission and, um, funding and put that towards a staff position that would focus on economic development. And the second motion was authorize the mayor to go ahead and make appointments to the EDC. Um, going forward, at the time, there was, there was one member left who had just been appointed and there were six open positions. So the mayor made those appointments, um, and in January of this year. So, uh, since that time, I guess I can kind of tell you where we're at status-wise. And that is that, uh, the, so the, the mayor made appointments. So we had seven members. Pretty much, pretty quickly, we lost three to resignations. They, uh, for whatever, every reason, they did not go forward on the commission. Um, since, since January, we've had to cancel, I believe, three meetings due to a lack of quorum, just having a challenge getting people together at the time. And we've gone ahead and we've recruited and we've, um, hired, you know, somebody now or moved somebody into that position to focus on economic development. So to fulfill that. So here we are in, um, I guess June now of 2025. And one of the directions that the council gave us verbally was this, this year in the summer, you wanted to revisit this item and decide whether or not, uh, it was timed, once we got a staff member on, on board to sunset the EDC. So we're here tonight to kind of do that review with you and, and hear your discussion. We have, we've, uh, provided a, an ordinance if the council so chooses to go forward. You could do your first reading tonight and we could start the process of, of dissolving the, the EDC. And I will say that the, the duties and the powers that are in the, the code currently are, are things that we have brought, uh, like I said, onto the staff's plate now. And we're already starting that work, uh, to move forward on that. So our intention is to continue the good work. And if we, we needed to down the line, we could always rethink input specifically for economic development, but the council is obviously always a, a big part of any kind of that input that we, that we take in as well. So with that, ready, ready for questions?
All right, great. We're going to take it out to the public for comment on the EDC item. Anyone in chambers wishing to comment, come forward. Take chambers first and then let me know if there's anyone online. Mr. Tursal.
I'm one of the members of the EDC. I would say that the lack of quorum is due to a couple of causes. So the first meeting was canceled not from a lack of quorum, but because the appointments were so late that we didn't meet in February. So that was one of the meetings. We met in March and in April, we were down to four members. And I was diagnosed with COVID two days before the April meeting. And so I was prepared to attend via Zoom, but, uh, the body can't do that because there has to be a quorum to approve being able to meet by Zoom. So I was responsible for that, uh, canceled meeting. And I was also responsible for May's canceled meeting, which I was also prepared to attend via Zoom because I was out of state. So one was because, uh, the commission hadn't really, uh, been formed yet. That was the meeting. And then two were my fault, but it was really a victim of the fact that if you only have four people and you need a quorum to approve someone attending by Zoom, you can't do that. When I originally applied for this position, part of my essay was that if the council wanted to get rid of it, you know, I'd be fine with that. Uh, I'd still be fine with it, but I would say that I don't think we've had a chance to really do anything yet. And I think contributions from some of the people who are in business here could be valuable. You, you don't have to spend any money on us anymore, well, other than staff's time. And so allowing it to continue for a few more sessions to see if we can do anything might be prudent. If not, then I don't have to show up Thursdays. Thank you.
All right. Anyone on my mind wishing to speak?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Bringing back to council, council people comment on the item. I, I'll just make a quick comment. I think, um, I mean, everything kind of has its lifespan and I think that, uh, I think we're ready to proceed with sunsetting. Um, we, we've already taken all the steps to make it more effective, to have more effective economic development within our own staff. And I think it's going to need that kind of attention. Uh, it's going to need the, to be, you know, something to be watered and taken care of and, and all, and ever, always eyes on. And I think, uh, giving it to some, to staff, especially the staff member who's charged with this is going to be very helpful with the businesses. I think the contributors that may be on the board now or may have been on the board can, uh, correspond with our staff member, meet with. Uh, and, and stakeholders can otherwise, uh, work together with our staff to, to build this effort out. And I think it'll even be better. So it's kind of like, we're trying to figure out what the best thing is for business. Um, and I think that we, we probably haven't got there yet. And since we're facing that some major economic shifts, um, this is a really good time to kick it into full gear, see what we need. You reallocate staff time from meetings and brown act and all that and reallocate it towards, you know, actual concept of, of economic development. So that's where I'm at with it. Uh, I, I approve, I support the recommendation and I'll recognize others that want to speak. Councilman Row.
Thank you, Your Honor. In this, in the, uh, agenda report dated, uh, 219, the City of Pacific Grove, uh, organizational diagnostic report. On page nine of 38, it says for a city the size of Pacific Grove, the number of boards and commissions serving in advisory role exceeds the expected range. The city has 16 boards and commissions as well as several city council ad hoc committees. And it does put a burden on. So we go back to talking about how we're going to do more with less. And I think Mr. Mogenson should be recognized for taking this, uh, pretty harsh report card seriously and making, and taking steps to, to make improvements. And also, um, number 11, uh, point 11 on page nine of 38 says, there's a limited focus on economic development and tourism. And I think having a deputy city manager that's focused on, uh, bringing business and tourism into the city and that we reduce the, the burden of an additional board and commission, I think is very prudent. And, um, but I don't think that that precludes us from asking the, the folks in the business community to get together and help on special projects or, you know, a subcommittee on, on an item that we feel would be valuable with their feedback. So with that, uh, I do support this as well. And I thank Mr. Mogenson for moving forward and taking his report card seriously.
Hey, Councilmember Garfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, you know, in any organization, uh, there's an ebb and flow. Uh, you outsource something and then you bring it back in house and then you outsource something and then you bring it back in house. And you always have objectives to see how well it will work. And I think this is a, a kind of an effort that says, you know, we've tried how sort of outsourcing this to a, a group of people. They've been helpful. They brought up good ideas, but maybe we can get more focused work, um, by having a staff person. So we'll try it. We'll see. It is always a possibility to, uh, revisit this, uh, if we think that would be a, a more prudent move. Mindful that the chamber, the HID and the BID are existing functional organizations that, that can work together. Um, folks in the business community are not shy. And I think that they can make their wishes known very readily. And so I think this is something we should give a good shot to and, and find a better way to use our resources. So I'm in support of it and I appreciate the effort that have gone into finding a structured way to do this that's equitable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald.
Thanks so much. And, and I really appreciate how the mayor and everybody else put it. We wanted to make sure there wasn't a gap in coverage while we got the person in place on staff who would take over this role. But I think we decided in the prior meeting that the, a staff person would just have much more power to do the work that needed to be done to actually carry through versus just a recommendation, actually having the ability to carry through on the actions. So I was going to make the same suggestion. So I'm glad you all did that. I think that having input from the business community can still be really valuable. And so there's no reason not to continue to contribute, contribute just because it's not an active, um, commission. But at the same time, I think that we'll get much more done, that better supports business by sunsetting it now and, and having a staff person who can support it in a more effective way. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mogenson, for bringing it in. Uh, I, I think everybody knows my views on this, so. Um, but I had a logistical kind of question. So this, with this ordinance, um, technically we are, there is an EDC meeting tomorrow. So that will continue, correct?
Correct. We still have a meeting. It's, the agenda is posted for.
And, and there will be a second read, so meaning that tomorrow's meeting will be the last EDC meeting or will there be another one?
Well, technically, we would, the second read won't be until mid-July. However, um, the first meeting could fall on the 4th of July. We'll have to look at that.
Okay.
We wouldn't be having that meeting, yeah.
So there may or may not be, but, uh, there is at least one more opportunity for, uh, the commission to meet. Uh, if, if there, there's a quorum that is, uh, it's, and, and then kind of voice their opinions on what, uh, they want the EDC to, to do technically. So, uh, interested to see what, what thoughts arise there. Uh, but I'm in support of the motion and, and I would say the other thing too is, uh, noting that there are so many boards and commissions. There are always vacancies. Uh, so I would, for whoever is interested to apply for other, uh, boards and commissions, I would, uh, encourage you to do, do so. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Emilio.
Thank you. Um, yeah, this has been discussed, uh, since December. Uh, I'm ready to make a motion. Request the city attorney read the ordinance.
This is an ordinance, um, of the City Council of the City of Pacific Grove, repealing Chapter 3.40 of the Pacific Grove Municipal Code on Economic Development Commission. And, uh, the next motion could be, uh, that you would move to, uh, approve recommended actions three through five.
Thank you. Uh, prove, uh, actions three through five.
I have a motion to throw. I'll second it. Sorry, I'll, I'll let someone do it, but I wasn't sure. Okay, we got a motion and a second. I'll take the second on, uh, recommendations three through five. Any further discussion? Decision. Oh, uh, we got a second. We're good.
Do we?
Yeah. Okay. And, and if there's no further discussion, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor of, we can just be through five, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Six oh, oh, six oh one. And we're off to, thank you very much for the work on that. Um, you know, I think it reflects that we're really looking at things or getting in the weeds and we're looking at everything, trying to figure out what's going to work better for the community. So we're doing that again on that item. 12A pedestrian safety, Central Fountain, Grand Fountain, over by the new hotel. We, this is a, uh, traffic item. And I'll, I invite our Public Works Director, Deputy City Manager, Dan Go.
Just thank you, Your Honor, members of the City Council. I'm about to give you the shortest presentation ever. Okay, so pedestrian safety at Central, Grand and Fountain. Well, maybe not if I can't figure out how to change the slide. Okay, so this was on your, uh, I believe a meeting in May, your first meeting in May, May 7th as a consent item, and it was polled. So what we're trying to do here is, um, I'm going to call it an upgrade of the intersections at Central, Grand and Fountain, and they need to be reconfigured per the conditions of approval for the new Kimpton Hotel. Um, the city's worked with the developer and engineer plans to make a four-way stop at Fountain and then also improve pedestrian safety at Grand Avenue adjacent to Jewel Park and also the museum. So here's the, the current configuration. You could see at Central and Fountain, you've got that large area of asphalt. What are we doing with that? It's always been my question. What are we doing with that? And then at Grand Avenue, you've got this funky kind of wave of a turn. What are we going to do there, right? So we came up with this. So where you have all the asphalt at Fountain and Central, we want to make a connecting sidewalk that goes all the way around, bulbouts. Make that area more of like a driveway approach in, in a driveway approach out. Our parking spaces will be losing one space there, but we're gaining a space on the opposite side of the road. Because before, we had that yield that you see at the bottom right of the screen. So I'm getting rid of that yield and putting in that new sidewalk and gaining a parking space right there. And then if you move over to the museum, per the conditions of the hotel, we were supposed to do a raised crosswalk across Grand, but it just doesn't work with the storm drain infrastructure or anything like that. When those conditions were developed in 2018, it wasn't really engineered or evaluated. So we opted to put in this larger bulb out and significantly slow traffic with it and significantly decrease pedestrian crossing times. So that's what we're looking to do here. The developer is on the hook for 20% of the engineering and the design, the engineering design, and then also the construction of the intersection. So we're going to segment out the bidding process and probably have all of the curb ramps be on a bidding schedule and have that be 20% of the curb ramps. There's nothing about paving in the agreement. But these roads are a very low PCI, a 27 for Central, a 44 for Grand. Fountain's not too bad at a 68, but if work, let's pave it. So we want to pave this also. And the developer's going to give us a, like a $13,000 credit towards the paving. Um, they're going to remove any paving aspects that they had and just give it to the city. So we can do it all in one swoop. Part of their project, they Part of their project, they will be pay or putting all new sidewalks around the new hotel. This is a major change. I don't always bring plan sets for approval to the City Council because they're usually pretty boring and straightforward. But this one's different. So here it is. Like I said, this was on consent and that's why we're here today. I'm open for questions. Thank you. And we do plan to put this out the bid. After approval tonight, we'll finalize up the bid package, put it out to bid. The hotel's looking to open in the fall. I don't have a specific date. We would like to get this work done. Probably begin August, September timeframe, right after Car Week. Get it done. This is a pretty simple project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Go ahead to the public. Anyone wishing to comment on the new intersection at the hotel? This is item twelve A. We got one in one player in the house here. There you go.
Prove of the plan. However, some of the new ball belts that we have do not have any kind of drainage and there's water standing in them. And I'm hoping that when they design these, they will put some sort of a drainage in so that we don't have that situation. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion. Appreciate that. Go online to God, Miss Stormer.
Thank you. Groot Carmelita first, Carmelita Garcia.
Miss Garcia.
Thank you. I'm the one that had requested this item be pulled. So I think I just heard twenty percent, but actually the report from May seventh says the applicant would pay twenty five percent. And that was a history resolution that was put on consent and the council at that time approved it. But what I really want to talk about is, you know, being that the city, city's financial situation is what it is. I I think the council really needs to have total clarity when it comes to any type of funding for any project within the city, no matter what department is doing it. So at the Traffic Safety Commission meeting that was on March twenty fifth, staff had presented this particular item to the Traffic Safety Commission and for the most part, they approved of it. And the question was asked, how much was this going to cost? And staff had responded. They had estimated it to be about six hundred thousand dollars. So I think, you know, the numbers need to be looked at again and for Mr. Marsh, since he's the financial guy, to adjust those numbers in the budget accordingly so that it doesn't fall short. And I realize that there will be some grants from TMC. No one seems to know how much that is. And I think too projected would be not in real good taste. But anyway, so that's what I wanted to speak of about that. So again, I think complete transparency so that you as council aren't surprised when things come up short and what have you, especially now during the city's financial situation, current and ongoing. So thank you very much.
Florence and Diamond.
Thank you. Yes, Carmelita, I was at the Traffic and Safety too and all along. And one of the things is that that cost because it's changed a whole lot. And the first time I really understood that developers were paying so little, I was appalled. I mean, that the city is really picking up the major portion of this, this whole plan. And of course, I was wondering too about all the special events while this construction is going on. And the whole total inconvenience is going to be for getting around that area. What is going to be the access to the library? Especially for mobility impaired people like me. And the book drop on Grand, where is it going to be moved? These are all a little, they're considerations, but remember this was brought as it's going to be starting at the end of May and happening in June. So that's going to carry through through all the July and the park events and things. And it's going to be a pretty, pretty much a mess. So it's interesting and I hope you've got all of that worked out too, because that's definitely a part of it. And it's a part of our quality of life. And this is a major thing. Okay. Thank you.
For the hands, Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead and close public comment on this pedestrian safety item, bring it back to the council for discussion and authorization and approval. Councilmember Row.
Thank you. I have a question from Mr. Go. What was the budget for the city's portion of this traffic redesign going into the? I mean, I think this was not the last council, but the council before, if I'm not mistaken. So I think it's maybe that could help clarify some, something for the the public.
Of course. The Councilmember Row, the initial capital improvement allocation was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Upon review of the project and then looking at or discussing with the developer, none of the original project didn't have any of the paving associated with it. But then, once we began engineering, Central Avenue in front of the library is toast. There's nothing left of it. The developer is going to pave like three quarters of the travel lane around the hotel. Do we want to have three quarters of a roadway repaved and then not have the rest of it repaved? We're talking infrastructure here. So at that time, Public Works looked at options. We have Regional Surface Transportation Program funding available. We get that on a three-year cycle through Transportation Agency of Monterey County. There's approximately three hundred thousand dollars and some change that we can use for transportation projects. This is an ideal candidate for that. This has got pedestrian vehicle aspects, makes safety or these intersections much safer. We would like to harness that money. I haven't put this out the bid, so it I want to be, I want to be right to say how much it's going to be. Let's put it out to bid. We do this often where then we find additional funding and we do budget modifications when that bid is brought forth through an ordinance. I've talked to Fred about doing that this way and we're all in agreement. Tonight, I'm just asking for the approval of the new plan set and authorize us to put this out to bid and let's find out what it's going to cost us.
Yeah, I I was anticipating that there was some money there that that we could get in funding. So that satisfies, you know, my questions and I'm certainly going to support this.
Excellent. Move to Councilmember Garfield.
I was on the council when this was originally brought up and it was a great opportunity to fix a very dangerous intersection. And so as you know, it's a three-way stop invites people to not know what's going on. People are scampering across the street in front of the the reading room, on their way to the library. They kind of get lost in the middle. It's it's not safe. And so I think this is an opportunity to get help with a longstanding transportation problem in corner in our city. I do have a question about the point about when there are events going on over the summer in Jewel Park. And also access to the library. How will the the demands for space be accommodated during this project?
Of course. So during the the construction of the curb ramps, there will be some access issues. But the roadways and stuff should still remain open.
Okay.
When we're paving, which will be a very short duration of time, there will be some times where Central Avenue is not going to be available or Fountain or Grand. But that's not like anything different than when we're paving a roadway. We're going to get in there. We're going to do the work. We're going to get out of there. We've evaluated the underground infrastructure here. Nothing really needs to be replaced. Most of the work here is on the surface. We need to do some storm drain work associated with the hotel. That's noted in the plan set, but it's minor. It's quick. We're going to get that done. The hotel is going to do that. We're going to get it done and move on. We've discussed this with the farmer's market. They should not have to relocate at all. And when we pave, we'll work like Tuesday through Friday and try to get it done outside of their timeframe. If we have to shift them one day or two days out of in the summertime or when we're doing the work, we'll do that. But I have spoken to them about this. And I've spoken to the Spiritual Center and they're on board. They love this.
I bet they do. Thank you. I am very impressed with how many ducks you've got in a good row. So thank you.
I want to turn the motion at this time for recommendations one and two. Obviously, we could still continue discussing.
Okay, I'll do the motion, but I have a, just a couple of things to say that I see that Central, Grand are in poor condition on the PCI and I think that's important to see. I think it would be best for Pacific Grove. I've been by that Clinton Hotel. It looks like it's really shaping up. Also, I would like to approve the central, make a motion to approve the Central, Grand and Fountain Avenue reconfiguration. And can we go with the authorize the unauthorized staff to issue a call for bids for the project?
A second.
We had a motion by Mayor Proton Emilio on recommendations one and two. We have a second by Councilmember Row, and I'll now recognize my colleague, Councilmember Perdure on discussion.
Yes, thank you. Dan, first of all, thanks for preparing the PowerPoint. I know you went out of your way to do it. Thank you. The the, I think my question is really the the timing aspect. So do you think you can go out to bid, come back, present to council, get everything done within the timeframe that you're looking for?
That's what I'm anticipating to do. That's correct.
Okay. And and I I would say just from our perspective and my perspective personally, if we're not spending money on infrastructure, what are we doing here? Because that's exactly what we need to do. So I'm going to be supportive of this project whenever it comes back. But I'm hoping that we're getting a good, I mean, the bids come in correctly and then the whatever kind of like funds that we get from TMC. I'll be interested to see how that plays out too. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion, Councilmember McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you also for thinking creatively with the developer and integrating what they would have paid for the paving into the cost of getting the whole road paved. So we don't have kind of a jigsaw puzzle paving job out in front of it at a very important intersection in our community. One thing I do want to follow up on is we had somebody ask about the bulb out and causing standing water. Any comments on that? I'm assuming that some drainage is being addressed to try and prevent that from being a problem during storm season.
Absolutely. Every time we engineer a project, stormwater is one of our first things we review. I think the slope and the contour of the earth at this location pushes everything down towards the ocean. I don't anticipate this being a problem whatsoever. We've been constantly working with the developers and the contractors at the Kimpton Hotel to make sure that their stormwater leaves their property and is properly addressed. So this takes all of that into account also. We've been working with them on this for months to ensure stormwater is adhered to properly.
Okay, great. Thanks. And just one little note because partly because I want to keep reminding everyone of the new daylight law. But I'm assuming that this will, because one of the, on the diagram, where they show the Ts for parking, one of them looked like it was quite close to the intersection and I can't read twenty feet on these maps, but just wanted to make sure that we're accounting for the daylight law in drawing the Ts. So we're not encouraging people to park somewhere where they could be ticketed for being too close to the corner.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I'll now take a voice vote on this. Motion's one and our recommendations one and two, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously, six oh one. Here's some applause. Okay, it's going to be, it's going to be a great project. Thank you very much, Mr. Go. We're going to backtrack back to item eight A, the Housing Element Monthly Status Update. And we, we don't need to presentate. I'm going to actually, this is a received report, so I'm going to recognize the caller who pulled this item first. And if there's any questions we can answer, we'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mayor.
I recall who the caller was.
Jane Williams.
Good evening. I requested this item eight A be pulled from this consent agenda to briefly share what I believe the public and this council should know about Pacific Grove's draft housing element. As the agenda report notes, the draft is currently under review by the state. We'll learn by late July whether or not it's certified. And Pacific Grove is not alone. Five of Monterey County's twelve jurisdictions also lack state certification. But until we do get state certification, we remain vulnerable to the builder's remedy. Could impose undesirable projects on Pacific Grove as long as they meet affordable housing quotas. In two thousand and twenty, Pacific Grove had nearly seven thousand housing units. The state now requires us to plan for one thousand one hundred and twenty four, twenty five more by two thousand and thirty one. Our draft housing element proposes placing half of those five hundred and eighty units in commercial zones. One area of concern is a proposal to build eighty seven affordable units by replacing our two main downtown parking lots. Thirty nine units on the lot between the old Bank of America building and Fandango's and eighty eight, forty eight on the theater lot. The draft does not explain where current users of those lots will park or where the cars owned by the eighty seven new homeowners will park. Hopefully, the E I R report now underway will explain that. Another concern is that nearly twelve percent of Pacific Grove homes, eight hundred and fifty five, were second homes in two thousand and twenty. That issue came up repeatedly in a public survey done by our former consultant. But the current draft does not address that. But my greatest concern is the lack of public participation. Since the Housing Element Advisory Committee stopped meeting in two thousand and twenty three, residents have had no voice in these decisions. The consultants do not live here. How can they understand the impact of removing our downtown parking? When will we, the public, get to weigh in? Planning for one thousand one hundred and twenty five new homes is a tough challenge. But without public involvement, we risk losing public support and making costly mistakes. Thank you.
No further hands on line, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I'll just ask one, just to follow up based on the comment. How many opportunities has the public had to get involved in this process?
I understand, and this was before I started with the City of Pacific Grove, that this, there was about a two to three year public outreach process where there was a lot of opportunities, both through workshops, online surveys, the housing committee that was mentioned by the the speaker this evening, all providing opportunities to provide public comment. And I'll just add that we're getting ready to go into another phase where the public will be able to weigh in both on the Environmental Impact Report that we're working on right now, along with the zoning code and general plan updates, all of which will be displayed at public hearings, made publicly available. E I R, for example, will be made available for forty five days at least for public comment. So there are opportunities for the public to participate and provide further input on this. We've just been kind of in a a technical phase the last few months to to get the E I R and the zoning regulations updated.
Thank you very much. So I would encourage those seeking to give input to go ahead and participate, follow on the website, on the city website and participate in the next phase of activities on this housing element. And then I'll ask one other question and hopefully this will be it. But why don't you, can you just tell us where we are and kind of where we're headed as in the long run here?
Certainly. We're looking at releasing the Environmental Impact Report at the end of June this month. And that'll start a forty five day public review period. In preparation for the release of that report, we are having a meeting with the Planning Commission next Thursday, the twelfth of June, at which we're going to be giving them some training on how to review an environmental impact report and things to be looking for to help. at which we're gonna be giving them some training on how to review an environmental impact report and things to be looking for to help sharpen their skills in the review of that document so that they are prepared when they hold a public hearing on the Environmental Impact Report that they will be able to make a recommendation on its adoption to the city council. So that's, that's the immediate goal. Along with the Environmental Impact Report, we'll be also providing the public the updates to the zoning regulations and the general plan that are part of the housing element. So.
And then what, what's our final kind of like goal for certification, I guess?
We, in the sky deal or? We are looking to get this in front of the city council this fall and then get that to the state right after the city council adopts or certifies or approves the housing element and getting it in front of the state. You know, it'll take them a little bit of time to certify it. But I'm hoping that that's been foreshortened by our continuing efforts to meet with the state and incorporate the recommendations that they've suggested to us for incorporating into the housing element. So we're working closely to make sure that that timeframe is as short as can be.
So maybe by the end of the year, we could have it, possibly?
That's what we're working hard to get accomplished.
Okay, I think that'd be great. This is a receive the report. If anyone else would like to ask, comment, make a question, make, ask a question, go ahead now.
I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And the comment is, there's always references made to why this project is so costly for Pacific Grove compared to other cities. And I can tell you that there was only one bidder for this particular, one consultant applied for this process. And the reason I believe that only one consultant applied is because we're not really a business friendly environment. And we're trying to make this a business friendly environment. And that starts from the council itself. So I, I'm hoping that we're making strides towards, towards that effort, which will help us realize more actually consultants like competing for bids, which will drive hopefully the prices down than up. But thank you.
Great comment. Thank you so much. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you. So one of the other questions by the commenter had to do with parking. And I don't recall what, what the answer was to that. But are there mitigations for parking? And partly why I asked is because the hotel is their employees are actually required to park in the parking lot behind the movie theater. And so I'm assuming there are allowances and plans for that.
Oh yeah, those will be really specifically addressed at the time a project comes forward. So we'll be looking to the project to provide the parking, not only for the residential units and, you know, depending on the type of project that they bring forward, there are some different requirements at the state level for parking, plus making up the parking that would be lost if that, that portion of the parking area were to be occupied by a building. It's a little bit of a, you know, kind of a pencil sharpening effort by the, on the part of the developer as they come forward, because they're gonna want to make sure that all of these things, all of these parking spaces that they're providing are gonna be able to, you know, they're gonna recoup that cost through either the rental or the sales of the residential unit. So time will tell a little bit on, you know, the, the parking situation or specifics about that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We've seen the report. There are no other comments. We'll go ahead and move to our final item of the night, which is gonna be nine B, backtracking to the 2627 extension with TOPPS. Nine B, and I'll recognize Mr. Go.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the city council, this item was on consent. It was pulled. Would you like me to proceed?
I, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for cutting you off. It was pulled by a member of the public, right? Yes, it was. I can't recall who it was, but I'll go ahead and recognize that person. Now you're right. Thank you. Okay, she's got her hand up. Go for it. Kind of got out of sync there.
Thank you, Mayor. Carmelita Garcia.
Thank you. So I understand the RFP process and you want the lowest bidder, but it seems like, you know, the one that has been selected has been part of the city scene, seen for quite a number of years. And I guess my question is, you know, why other professionals aren't selected in as much as they may be outbid by TOPPS? And also whether or not there's going to be an accounting presented for this. I guess their last, last contract was $250,000 as well, just to ensure that that amount, if not less than, is being spent by the company. And then whether or not, I know you won't answer my question, but my other thought is whether or not, because you will approve it, if they will come back next year again for approval. Since this is what a four-year extension, I think almost a million dollars anyway. So those are my thoughts and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stormer, I guess.
Yes, Inga Lawrence and Dimer.
Thank you. Well, I'll say what I've said just about every year, and that is that I am not impressed with TOPPS. I don't think they do a very good job. And I think they send hackers in. And some of our trees truly show that. So I'll leave it at that. But it's time to truly look at something and not remain so comfortable with, oh, let's just use them because they're always gonna come in. I've worked with them before. That's not necessarily moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further hands.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and bring it back to public for comment. I, I'm gonna, I am gonna kind of ask that question that was asked by one of the callers. This is an extension. Can you tell us what this is an extension for? And then when would you go, when would you logically go back to TOPPS for another extension if any were to, if, if you were to do so?
Sure. Mayor Smith, so last fiscal year, for this current fiscal year that we're in now, we did a request for proposals and received proposals and brought those forward to city council for consideration. At that time, the city council authorized staff to enter into an agreement with TOPPS Tree Service that was for fiscal year twenty, I want to make sure I get this right here. Last fiscal year, right? So 23 or 24, 25. You authorized with that RFP and that contract to have these extensions, but the extensions needed to be approved by the city council. So the Public Works Department is asking for the city council to authorize an extension with TOPPS Tree Service to continue that contract that was approved in 2425 to move forward for fiscal year 2526. Does that make sense?
It, it does, except that the subject was 2627. So that's what threw me off. And I think that's incorrect.
That is incorrect. I apologize. That is a typo. I did not catch that.
Okay, so we'll just make sure that when we make the motion, we'll catch that. But and the other question I have related to that exact issue is if we, we have tied ourselves to an annual undertaking of this item through the contract itself, it, it reflects that? I, I'm, that question's a little vague. Let me try again. The, it, does our contract state that we must do these one-year extensions or?
It, it, the contract states the extensions can be granted per city council approval.
Okay.
Yes. So it doesn't automatically state per mutual letter, which we have some that do. It says per city council approval.
Okay, I understand why you're here. Thank you.
That's why I'm here.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. And any further comments by council? Councilmember Row, yes.
Just to make sure that we're clear. TOPPS Works is directed. Is that correct? Like they don't go out ad hoc and then cut down trees and then send us a bill. Am I correct?
That is 100% correct. It's all done through a work order system that TOPPS, we see work that needs to be done or street tree clearance. We call them up, we create a work order, and they go out and do that work, which we monitor and direct 100%. We evaluate all of the invoicing and billing that comes through, compare that to contract and evaluate it and then make payment on that invoice if it's the work that was requested through those work order systems.
Okay. And then the second question is, if this is $250,000 a year for emergency services plus other things that come up, did they use all, did you use all 250 last year?
Well, we're currently in the two, the year, so we use them throughout the whole year. And it's not just emergency. It's also street tree clearance, parks, workings. They did all of the landscape tree trimming median on the lighthouse upper median. So the lower and upper lighthouse, they go through that annually, do all the trimming, the grasses. So they do quite a bit of that. They do work on our oceanfront. So it's all directed and we're probably gonna get pretty close to the 250, but not necessarily. Is there more work beyond the 250? 100%. I mean, I could probably spend $500,000 a year on our trees.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further comment or would someone like to make a motion as to recommendation one?
A quick question.
Yes, yes, Councilmember Garfield.
When you go through the bidding process, how many firms bid on a project like this?
I don't have the RFP in front of me from last year, but I believe there was about four or five firms that bid it.
Okay, and TOPPS was the low bid?
That's correct.
Per procedure. It has to be the low bid unless there's a good reason not to.
Public Works Code requirements is typically the lowest bid. That's correct.
Okay. So speaking to the aesthetics of tree trimming, would we anticipate that having an in-house forester would be helpful for making sure that the work that's getting done is aesthetically pleasing as opposed to just being done?
I would have to say that our current contract arborist that is on staff does that and makes sure that the trees are trimmed to the standard that they would like to see. And they are directing all of that trimming.
And that it's good for the tree.
And that it's good for the tree and the health of the tree. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Councilmember Pardurian? Yeah, I would say it's probably, I know I've, I've heard this quite a few times and we, we've already been through this process. There were five that were there as part of the RFP. We selected one. We had the same, I would, my recollection at least, we had the same kind of discussion at the same time, at that time too. So we've moved on. We've selected a provider and that provider is there for, for your extensions. My, my, my comment here is really if, I think it'll be helpful for the staff and the council to know at any point in time, if, if TOPPS is not doing the service correctly, highlight that incident to us and we'll review what is going on and make amends accordingly. But just coming with a general comment saying TOPPS is not doing its job, doesn't help anybody here. City needs to be productive on both sides. So I encourage anybody who, who wants to complain to utilize the, the channels that are available to register that complaint and provide some more description so council can come to know what is going on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Mayor Portemilio.
To also mention that TOPPS Tree Service was selected. It was lowest bidder. The good news is that TOPPS is local also. And it's, it's good that we hire local also. And also I want to make a recommendation. Mr. Go, did you say 2526 was supposed to be the?
That's correct. This is for next fiscal year. I apologize about that typo.
Nowhere's. I authorize the 2526 extension with TOPPS Tree Service to provide tree maintenance services for trees in the public right of way and city-owned properties in the mound not to exceed 250,000.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Portemilio, second by Councilmember Row. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Take a voice vote on this. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing no dissent, passes unanimously, six zero one. And I believe that brings us to the end of the agenda. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us online and in chambers. And wish you have a, have a great night and meeting is adjourned.